Board of Selectmen with the legislative meetings.
Let's let the speeches to the board of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan on nation under God, in the use of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the July 14th, 2014 Board of Selectmen's meeting in Middleborough. We are being taped by Middleborough Cable Area Access, Community Cable Area Access, and we're being broadcast on Verizon and Comcast. Did I say that?
Yeah, you get all of it, more or less.
It's the summer time, it's killing me. Unanticipated, any member of the board have anything under unanticipated?
Sure, thank you.
I have one thing, I would like to see if you guys would be interested in talking about setting up a policy for the board for social media. Some things have come up over the past couple of weeks, and I just have some questions myself. Like, I have a Facebook account that says Alan Crowley, Middleborough Selectmen on it. I don't use it to post official notices or anything like that. Started out when I was campaigning, and I just kind of kept it going. But it's not an official page. We all know that there's way too many pages out there that pretend to be official pages for the town, and that they are not. But I was wondering if we should have a discussion regarding policies for members of the Board of Selectmen moving forward, and maybe we can branch out from there. But I just figured we could start here and then work our way outwards that way. All right. Jackie, you want to put that on for the 28th at 8:30?
(laughing).
Just sometime in the future when we can squeeze that discussion in. All right. Does any member of the audience have anything under unanticipated? All right. Announcements and recognitions, does any member of the board have anything under announcements and recognitions? Mr. North?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank the North Middleborough Parade Committee for their excellent work with the parade on July 5th. It was canceled due to weather on the 4th, and it was actually a good call although it was sunny in the morning, by 10 o'clock it was pouring. There was a great turnout on the 5th. The police and fire department did a great job as usual. Saw a lot of people out there, a lot of the usual floats and great crowds, so I just want to thank everybody who was involved with that. That's it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, the Middleborough mess movers will be cleaning up the town on the Saturday, July 19th, and they're going to meet at the Town Hall at 9:00 AM.
They do a fantastic job, they just go out, they provide, all you have to do is show up and have plenty of mosquito repellent on, and they go out and they pick up the trash off the sides of the road, then other people carelessly toss out their windows. So it's a great, great job by Melissa E. Martin, she does a fantastic job, and it's actually, it's a pretty rewarding experience. You get a little angry at first, but then you get over it and you get all the trash picked up.
I think they usually have a contest with Lakeville, so you can pick up the most trash, so.
Yeah, they do. And, like I said, it's a great program. Anyone else have anything?
I do. Mr. Chair, I would just like to put out to all the town departments, the tourism committee will be using the bank building for Crazy Days. We want your information, you want to get something out to the public, you want to advertise, please contact us. You can contact me right at the Board of Selectmen's office. That's it.
All right. I just want to say thank you to Fran Cass and the Middleborough Police Empire, who once again, a fantastic 4th, 5th of July fireworks display. My family and I went down to the field, watched the fireworks, had a great time. My two-year-old little boy was absolutely enthralled by the whole thing, as was I, and just a fantastic job by everybody who was involved. And it's really, it's about as Norman Rockwell and Americana as you can get, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you. Any member of the audience have anything under announcements or recognitions? All right. Minutes, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes for June 30th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to vote to authorize the chairman or his designated to sign the warrants for weeks ending July 12th and July 19th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. New business, I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Judy Bigelow Coster as a member of the tourism committee for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second, should I comment?
Go on, split.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment. Jackie, could you tell us how we determine those years? I think we'd spoken about this. One or three years doesn't really matter, you can be reappointed, but we have to stagger them? Could you just mention that?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
All right.
So if it's a one-year term, or a two, or a three, that doesn't mean, oh, you have to get kicked out. It just means that we have to stagger when the terms end, so that we have the committee covered at all times.
All right. Are there any other terms available?
We can always use people. I mean, we get 30 people that come to meetings, they're not all members, so.
Is there a three-year term available?
I do not believe there is, no.
No.
I don't think so, we have five people.
No.
All right. All right. So I have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. Thank you, Judy. I'd entertain a motion to approve a right Pierce invoice for a subcontractor services in the amount of $11,349.90 and to authorize the town manager to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Charlie, you want to speak to this a little bit?
These are the bills due the end of April, and, you know, the project is moving forward well, and, you know, we're getting close to getting finished with the design.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McKinnon?
Any idea how soon they'll be able to start awarding bids, or bidding?
Yeah, the design will be done in October, and we'll be out to bid, you know, around the first of the year, and we have to have bids in hand by April 1st in order to qualify for some of the grant funds that are available, so that's obviously the objective. Plus, we want to have, well, we'll go to town meeting this fall, get the authorization to finance it, and then, you know, we'll file our applications, we'll wait for the results, and then, you know, when they're on the screen, you know, just what makes a financing again.
And when do we hear about whether we'll get the zero percent?
Yeah, that'll be in the spring.
The spring?
Yeah.
All right.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to approve a right Pierce invoice for design upgrade in the amount of $238,000, $238,075.32, and to authorize the town manager to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Charlie, pretty straightforward?
We're, right now, we're at 50 percent, so we're right on target.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to vote to approve a right Pierce invoice for task-too permitting assistance in the amount of $5,925.35 and to authorize the town manager to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Again, pretty straightforward, Charlie?
Exactly.
All right. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to pay an invoice for the board's Mass Municipal Association annual dues in the amount of $2,764.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? This isn't mixed martial arts we're talking about?
Sign me up.
All right. All in favor?
Previous meeting.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to issue a common victual license to Montini's Family Pizzeria at 337 West Grove Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Are there anybody here from?
Yeah, three of us.
Would you like to speak to this? You don't have to.
Right now.
You just could stand up, introduce yourself, say hello. Like I said, you don't have to, if you don't want to.
Come right up to the mic.
Come to the microphone.
First, my name is Rich Montini, co-owner of Montini's Family Pizzeria, and I'm here with my father and my brother, they're also part owners, and we look forward to coming here to Middleborough and offering our recipe to the town and turning into a big family. That's what we are, we're all about, good food and bringing in a, just a tight establishment to the community. We're well-known in the Brockton, that's where we're originally from. I live in Plymouth now, and my father and my brother are from the area as well, and we've been known over the years for our recipes in pizza and pasta, and that's what we're looking forward to doing here.
Yep. When do you plan on opening?
Next week, hopefully.
All right.
Next Tuesday is our goal.
Great.
And we have some menus here and business cards, and I'd like to leave them for you guys.
Sure.
If you want to take a look at them, we'll have delivery and maybe a little catering down the road.
Any member of the board have any questions?
So you've run businesses before?
Not in the restaurant field, no. My father has taught me over the years how to cook, and I've worked in some restaurants over the years, along with my brother as well, well-known restaurants, and my father has started up many businesses, pizza restaurants, they would call him in because everybody's known about his secret recipe, recipes, I should say, so he's gotten some restaurants off the ground, and they've turned out really well, and, you know, we're well-known for our secret.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to let you know, we have a tourism committee and a website that's going to be launched very soon, and get me your information, Selectmandalpi.
Sure.
And we can put it right on there on our website, so it connects right into the Massachusetts Office of Travels and Tourism, so it's a nice tour for local businesses.
Yeah, I have, my email is on the pamphlets here, and if we can go back with emails, it'd be great. I would like to get out to the community as much as I can.
Great way to get out to the community would be to get a booth at Crazy Days.
I heard about that.
Second.
Yeah, that's like a week after our opening.
Yeah, it's coming up quick.
Right.
Yeah.
Even if I don't have a booth, if I can walk around and give out flyers, you know, we'll see.
You can give out pizzas, you make a lot more friends.
I would love to, it's just, everybody is itching. You mentioned about a Facebook page, and we created a Facebook page when we first, you know, thought about doing this, and we already have almost 500 likes, and we haven't even opened the doors. Everybody is just, you know, asking us, when are you opening, when are you opening, so. I'm excited, it's been a long road, and we're finally that close, so.
Do you do that every year?
Oh, yeah, every year.
Yeah, so we'll definitely do it.
Crazy Days. We also have Herring Festival in the April, we have an Oktoberfest coming up in October, and we have a Festival of Lights in December, so get me your information, and I'll put you on our list for the tourism we send out to the local businesses.
That sounds great, awesome. You want me to leave these here?
You can eject. Probably see you Tuesday.
Yeah, we'll be there. Thanks. We're going to announce a grand opening on Saturday, the 26th, so we'll do a little soft opening the week before, anyway.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. Congratulations, welcome to Middleborough.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Diane Stewart as a member to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term expiring on June 30th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? You up for this, Diane?
Absolutely.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. All right. 7:30, we have a WIPD hearing, a little early.
I think Chris Spomster would like to continue.
Can we just vote to continue that, or should we wait till 7:30?
Probably we should wait till 7:30.
All right.
It's going to take two seconds, it's not going to help us too much.
All right. Should we have a discussion on the assessment center? Or should we wait on, I think we should probably wait on that.
That's not a hearing.
That's not a hearing. I mean, and Mr. Morse is here, so we might as well, you know, launch into that.
All right.
Mark Morse is the president of MMA Consulting Group, in fact, he was involved in the recruitment of town manager the last time out.
Yes, of course, yes.
You got to ask him?
I assisted in the process.
Okay, well, have a good night, then.
I appreciate the support. I briefly talked to Charlie, I can talk about the assessment center process, I can be brief, I know you have a lot on the agenda, but if you could give me five or six minutes, I can give you a good overview of the process. I brought some material, I think I had circulated it before, but I wanted to just bring it again, simply because I want to show you what a schedule looks like, and if the last page in that, there's a schedule, because we can talk about that, and that'll be a good way to explain the process. What an assessment center is, it's a process for looking at the skills and abilities of management and administrative employees, and there's a long history of assessment centers going back 60 or 70 years, and in particular in Massachusetts, since the very late 1980s has been a large number of assessment centers, and jeez, I probably worked on 50 or 60, or if not more, police chief assessment centers alone, including other kinds of disciplines, fire, a lot of promotional employees in particular. But if you think about an assessment center, look at it this way, we actually look at the candidates, and we put them into like a slice of life, a scenario, and we evaluate their performance, and we evaluate their performance on key management skills, such as decision-making, problem analysis, communication, teamwork, and a variety of other kinds of skills, and we can design it so some skills are more emphasized than others in that process. What, if you look at it in the simplest forms, there are a number of sort of actors involved in the assessment center process. There are the candidates, those people who participate in the assessment center, there's someone like myself and one of my colleagues that I work with, by the name of Bill Soder frequently on these, we're the exercise coordinators, we develop the material and see if the process goes smoothly, and there are the assessors, those panels of assessors who evaluate the performance of the candidate on predetermined criteria and a defined framework. So there's really a number of actors in the process. In addition, there may be role players or other people in the particular process. Typically, for a police chief assessment center, we would run, oh, I would say, five or six exercises, some of those are two-part exercises. Now, what an exercise is really the scenario, the framework in which the candidate participates in, and in that, they're evaluated on their performance. Now, there are many kinds of examples that are in there. Typical assessment center exercise you may have heard about is an in-basket, or a variation of an in-basket, which we call an in-tray. Imagine yourself coming to your office, and what do you have? You've got a bunch of emails, right? You've got other correspondence, and part of that exercise is to triage that, to make decisions on those kinds of things, to delegate appropriately, and so on. Very straightforward, but a thing that we do every day, and it's good decision-making and problem analysis exercise. What does a chief do? Chiefs spend a lot of time talking to people. If you ask chiefs what they do, they say, well, 95 percent of my time is dealing with people. So there's a variety of things you can do to test those kinds of skills, and those are communications, obviously, human relation skills, problem analysis skills is really a big part of that, because you have to figure out what the problem is, and those can be one-on-one meetings, meeting with a citizen, meeting with a problem employee, meeting with a member of the press, they can take other forms. You ever do a press conference? You could do a press conference. I'm not a big fan of them, but typically we would do them, and the candidates provide with information and advance like a police report, an incident occurrence, a background, and they have to come talk about it. So there's dozens of types of exercises designed to bring out those management skills. If you look at the back of that, the last page, I think, in that handout, you see a schedule, that was actually a police chief assessment center schedule that was conducted earlier in the year, and you notice there are two columns, you see the times, so when we get a candidate, this is what we know about the candidate, we know that the candidate's qualified, we don't know anything else about the candidate. We don't see the resume, certainly the panelists don't see the resume, I may occasionally. We don't know who the candidates are, and if members of the board are the candidates, you come in in the morning, you conduct an orientation session, and we assign candidate numbers, you're Chief One, you're Chief Two, Chief Three, and that's who you are the rest of the day, as far as we're concerned. On that schedule, what do you see? You see actually two columns. In this assessment center, typically, when we have five candidates, we actually run two panels of assessing. So if candidate one is in one exercise, you see him at 9:00, you may not see him again until like 10:30 when he's with another panel, and the idea is to conduct sufficient evaluation, exercises to evaluate the candidate in a fair and equitable manner. With two panels, you actually get a sort of a double review, because you have people reviewing the candidate in a different way. If you look at that schedule, there are two panels in the morning, and you notice the two panels in the afternoon? Well, the two morning panels are scrambled, and so technically in the afternoon, you get different panels, so the idea is to be as objective as possible when you evaluate the candidate. The outcome is some evaluation. The outcome can be, often, people want to see what it is as in points, how he did, is there a score? Yes, we come up with that, but more importantly, it's the underlying elements of the scores that we show. For example, if someone has strong human relations skills, we need to show that, if someone has a better decision-making, we need to show that, and so the actual outcome is a narrative report and a spreadsheet, kind of takes each of the exercises, each of the competencies or skills that we tested, there's a score, and they have a meaning, and we describe it, and you can look across the spreadsheet and say, Mark Morse is a pretty good decision-maker, but he has lousy human relationships. You don't quite say it that way, but, I mean, you can see what you can do. So the idea in this process is to give you more information about the candidate. When you're selecting a candidate, what are you doing? You're looking at, you know, the history, because you know who your people are, you've got an employment record, you'll look at sort of the education or other kinds of background they may have, they may have, or the unique qualifications that they develop or skills, and what we try to do is evaluate those competencies or skills and abilities, that gives you additional information to make a selection of the particular candidates. Now, even many times, those people who don't get to become the chief or score that well, it's a great learning experience. What we've found through the years, that if people get to see what their strengths are, they begin to understand it, and they can improve on those. So typically, what we do is after we finish an assessment center such as this, we come back and we talk to the candidates, to go into bed and say, this is how you did, these were your strengths, these are the things you can work on. Little example, about 10 years ago, we did an assessment center for a police captain, position, I forget it, we had six candidates, we had two great candidates, and we had two candidates who couldn't find a room. One was a male, and one was a female. They each had communication problems, one person was a one-dimensional candidate, only ever done one thing in his life, professionally. We debriefed them. One of the candidates joined Toastmasters, improved their skills, another one went back to school and worked on her writing and other kinds of communication skills. Five years later, we did the assessment center, guess who were number one and two? They were one and two, and the scores were so close, there's no difference between them. So with a little bit of pushing and a little bit of advice, and in their case, a little bit of support from the department, they were able to improve their skills dramatically, and that's part of the process we hope to engender in the assessment center. Typically, we would conduct assessment center at that schedule, or one for you would be completed in a day. We have tentative results by the end of the day, and we'll get a little more formal letter within several days in a practical manner. So at this assessment center, there's at least, there were at least, what, I guess, five candidates we were going to have. We have at least five panel members, a three-member and a two-member panel, there might be actually six panel members, depending on what exercises we do. I would be here, and one of my colleagues would be here, another exercise coordinator, and so on. A panel is really composed of different, two types of people. There are public safety executives who don't know anybody here, retired or current, we've trained them, we use those particular people, and we also integrate other management professionals, because what's the chief job? A big part of the job is management and direction. So it's really a mix of those type of skills, and we also try to, you know, mix the composition of the skills, male, female, minority, and so on, so that we have a representative of that. So typically, people will travel some distance, we pay them actually to do that, we train them, we pay them, and they come in and conduct the assessment center. All they'll know about you is they'll have some background information, and all they'll know about the candidate is that they are qualified for the job, and during that day, they'll know it's Candidate One, Candidate Two, and so on. So that's their particular job in that process. So that's probably about as fast as I could talk today, I feel like I'm slowing down. Usually, I can speak real fast, but I kind of worn out today myself, so that's the basic framework. Any questions? Pretty straightforward, no secrets, you know, pretty direct.
When do you think you'll be doing this?
We scheduled a date, was that the 23th? The 28th? So we started, we had to put the final schedule together, and we started working on the material. Oh, I should mention, observers can come, I thought you were just helping to point it, I thought you could observe the process, you can't make any comment. We actually videotape the exercises, and at the end of the day, we pull out the card and we load it into somebody's computer, so we have videotape.
Record of.
Of that, a record of, if you're the candidate, we have a record of you. That's both good for the town and actually good for the candidate ultimately, so that's really the purpose of it.
How many observers do you love?
Depends how big the rooms are, about two or three we can accommodate, you know, probably with the board, I guess the board's the appointing authority, probably. What I say to observe is, if you want to come as a member of Board of Selectmen to observe, you have to come to at least one exercise and sit through all of the candidates in that one exercise. So you may see exercise one, you may be able to do three, you might be able to do four, you know, but at least to see what it's like, so you understand what's happening. I like people to understand what's going on, by seeing when you understand, in the beginning, see the differences between the candidates, and they also see what the assessors, how they evaluate, and so on.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McKinnon?
Where do we plan on doing it? In here? Do you have enough space to do that? Yeah, we need roughly three rooms, so I talked to the assistant, and we've probably organized what we really can do it. Okay. The rooms will all be big enough for what you need? Yeah, they'll be big enough, I mean. I mean, I know this room would be big enough. Yeah, some of them, because of the nature of the exercise, a small conference room will work for one or two of them, a bigger room for other ones, see what you can do to fit that exercise if you're ready. Although, an eight-by-10 room with 10 people in it is not recommended. This will be July 28th? The 28th, likely, we would start, well, I would start probably with my colleague around 8:00, get organized, but nothing will happen until about 9:30, so we've got our mechanics and things we have to go through and make sure everybody's prepared.
Anyone else have any other questions?
What kind of should we alert the candidates to be here that day?
Yeah, you know, I was looking at it this afternoon, could I email you tomorrow? Because I was talking to my colleague, Bill Soder, and we have to just, we have to formalize some sense of the timing, but my guesses would be 8:00 in the morning, but I'll email you. Just mechanically, what happens is I need the candidates for about a half hour, 45 minutes, we've got to give them a schedule, the design candidate numbers, and I talk them through each of the exercises, so there's no surprise, you know, you have to know the general areas where they're going to occur, and so on, and, you know, to read the internet, to, you know, talk to other people who do that in assessment centers, but they have to remember the following thing, when we write instructions that we hand you, almost everything we do, we give a written instruction for, do what we say, not what you read. Sometimes, you know, the candidate's not paying attention to what you're doing. I should say one other thing, I haven't talked to Charlie about this, we'd like to do a program planning exercise. That means several days before the assessment center, we'd like to, we provide the candidate, actually through the manager's office, a memo, and it's written like it's from the town manager or from the Board of Selectmen, and the candidate has to write a, I would call it, how do you get memorandums from department heads or someone? Two or three main page memorandum on solving a problem? Well, we would give one to them, they have to turn it in on the day of the assessment center, and we need to read it, and one of the panels will play their roles, and they will interview them as a member of whatever committee they're supposed to be in particular. So it's as if many departments go to the selectmen, they go to the finance committee, they go to the commissions, so we would structure an exercise around that. I didn't tell you that yet, but that's what we decided to do. Great exercise, at least it's fun for us.
Would the presence of a selectman have any influence on the assessment? I wouldn't, and I'm asking this because I have no idea how your process works. I personally have no idea what goes on in hiring a police chief. I have, this will be the first time I've hired a police chief. I'd be interested in attending the assessment, but I don't want to do that if my presence changes anything in the process.
Well, I don't care. The assessors certainly don't care. And the real truth is, the candidates have certain, they won't even see you. They might notice if they start, they come in the room, they have to focus and get it done. They're pretty, you'll find candidates very intense focused on it. If they're not focusing, they're probably not going to do well. And likely, these candidates are all motivated. We get motivated candidates, you get candidates focusing, and that's what will happen. We haven't ever had problems. Certainly, if we use a lumosize at one point or something else, someone's got to sit here and make a decision. But I've never had a problem. I don't like to have ten at once, but a couple of people, it's not a problem.
All right. Anyone else have any other questions?
I think, you know, we'll conduct it on the twenty eighth, and you'll have results shortly thereafter.
Technically, have it right then, I'll give it on the computer, and you just need to follow the tape, so, but you'll have it that night.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Pleasure.
Look forward to seeing you.
Sure, if there are any questions, just give the Charlie, I'll answer them, and it's not a problem at all.
All right. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Charlie. Yeah, I'll be here, I'll talk to you.
All right.
Well, Mr. Chair?
Mr. McKinnon?
If this assessment's done on the twenty eighth, then we'll have to have our own interviews with the candidates, which will be, will we set up a separate night for that?
Yeah, I think you want to do a separate night.
Yeah. So we're probably going to-
Those interviews would be public?
Yeah, those would be public, yeah.
Yeah, but it could be anything, it could be that week or the following week, because we do want to move with this.
Yeah.
Because then we have to make our decision in-
End of August, right?
Well, he's leaving, what?
Middle of September.
Middle of September.
Yeah, no, I think we're, you know, we're in really good shape in terms of time.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions? Anyone from the audience have any comments or questions? All right. All right, seven-thirty, we have a WIPD hearing with Cumberland Farms, 150 South Main Street, and I would understand a motion to continue to twenty eighth at eight-thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passing unanimously.
Ms. Lewis?
We passed over something. We were going to announce the names of the candidates as well, so-
Am I tied? Where's, oh, announcements of candidates, all right. So we have five candidates for the position of police chief in the town of Middleborough. Peter Andre, David Beals, Jr., Robert D. Ferreira, Jr., Angelo J. Lepana III, and Joseph M. Perkins. I am going to look forward to our assessment and our interviews with these fine gentlemen. It's not going to be an easy choice.
Mr. Chairman, I want to announce tonight that I will be retiring from my position as town manager at the end of October. While I've greatly appreciated and, you know, enjoyed my service to the town of Middleborough over the last six years, it's time for me to close out my career in municipal government. I want to say that I truly have enjoyed working here and the support that I've received from you and from the community during my tenure. But that being said, there's a lot of work to be done over the next three and a half months. Tomorrow, I'll be drafting a memo to the board to outline a process and a timeline for choosing a successor, and while I will not be a part of that process, obviously, I will certainly talk off the position to my colleagues and peers, because Middleborough is a great community, and this is really a great job. So that's all I have to say tonight.
Can I say no?
So moved, no.
Yeah, you will be sorely missed, Charlie. I appreciate all the time and effort you put into the, to your job here, and I-
Well, I appreciate that, and, you know, you know the feelings behind it all. I've greatly enjoyed working for all of you and all the members of the boards that I've worked for over the years, and, you know, I think we've made a lot of progress and done some really good things, and, you know, I'm sure that, you know, the first new select will be able to continue that, and I'm very comfortable with, you know, the board, you know, finding somebody to carry on.
Now, would we use an assessment center similar to the one we're using for the chief?
You know, you could, you know, it's up to you. You know, you might, you know, want to see how it goes, and, you know, see if that's something you want to do. I think the process you followed last time, last time is, you probably don't recall, but, you know, you did use Mr. Morse to help you find candidates. You appointed your own screening committee, you know, several members, former members of, you know, this board, Maroni, other people, and that committee, I think, did a very good job. I think we had a very good pool-
Yeah, you agree with that decision.
So we was a great outcome. So I highly endorse that process, but, you know, you might find that you want to do it, and it's, you know, it's, you know, becoming more and more common to use assessment centers even in these positions, so, you know, that'll be your decision.
Would, should we have a discussion right now about forming a town manager search committee?
I would wait till next week, next meeting. I don't think you have to, you know, do that, but, but, you know, you certainly-
I think, yeah.
I mean, I, you know, just, you know, for, you know, for the public's, you know, knowledge, I, you know, I surprised the board about this today. This is the first, you know, pretty much their hearing of this as well, so it doesn't give you a lot of time to think about it, you know, so.
Let's discuss the committee next week, next meeting. Let's get some ideas about people-
In a similar fashion to the police chief search, I'd like to get this going as soon as possible.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Because there's some pretty big shoes to fill.
Well, you know, the advertisement for the position, we can get that together as soon as possible and get that out there, because anybody that's going to come in is going to probably have a job already, and this could be a step up, but they're going to have to give, you know, can't walk in and say, "Well, the town manager can't give, you know, two weeks' notice, I'm leaving now," you know.
Yeah, no, and you're right, I think we have to, you know, or you have to, you know, act on this quickly, but I think, given the amount of time that, you know, there's nobody left, I think we'll be able to have somebody onboard, you know, while I'm still here, and if, you know, if not, I'm not going anywhere, I'll be around.
Right. The advantage is, you're not, you're not taking a job someplace where you have to start November one, so, I mean, you won't have to housemate November one, but normal retirement program. But, yeah, I think we should get the advertisement going as soon as possible.
I've already, you know, I pulled out the one that was used the last time, which I think is pretty good, and, you know, interestingly, it had, you know, even though at that point the charter hadn't changed, I think it anticipated the kind of skills that you wanted in this position, so.
So we would want to verify that the ad has similarities for our charter, too.
Yeah, yeah. And I could have, that'll be part of the memo I'm going to do for you in terms of outlining the timetable and the cost.
Any other comments or questions? Phil, Jackie will have the discussion regarding a town manager search committee for next, not this Monday, next Monday. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? All right, anything else, Charlie?
Well, that's all, Mr. Chair. That's enough.
Big decisions coming out, coming out of the way. Correspondents, Mr. McKinnon, you want to go first?
Mr., item number twelve, which is earth removal inspections. Mr. Peck did some inspecting, and there was one, one of the sites had screening, they were doing screening, and they weren't supposed to be doing screening, and I believe he rectified that, but the particular comet was crossed out, so I just want to get that verified, that screening has been stopped, that they're not supposed to be screening at the site. Earth removal is just, you know, dig and haul, so. Unfortunately, my sheet of paper that had the particular items, naturally, sitting at home at my desk where it's safe. So would you speak with Mr. Peck about that, Mr. Town Manager? Thank you. And item number ten, Chestnut Street, had to put a new culvert in down there, is, do we know whether that's complete yet, or are they still working on it?
I don't know, but I didn't find out, Mr. Peck.
I know there was an announcement on the web page that the street is closed, obviously, except the people that live there, but they're through traffic anyway, so. And that will be it for me.
Ms. Dolphy?
Uh, yes, number three, for the animal lovers out there, the House is voting on a bill, they're working on it now, to increase the penalties for animal abuse, and if you want to go along with this, please do, by calling your representative, emailing them, voting, snail mailing them, however you want. The bill will increase penalties for animal abuse, require veterinarians to report animal abuse, and create a task force to complete a systematic review of the laws relating to animal cruelty and protection. We've had a couple incidences in Middleborough where we've come upon animals that were not in the best situations and really needed someone on their side, so please contact your representative. Representatives are Tom Colter, Keiko Oral, and Susan Gifford. Okay, I also had number six, the Gas and Electric, Middleborough Gas and Electric is doing, what is it, a survey for their lines for safety east of the Masquet River, including Oak Point area and downtown, so if you see someone out there doing a survey, looks like they're messing with the gas lines, they are supposed to be there, they will be in a Gray Ford Escape 2014, and the name of the company will be on there, it will be Survey and Analysis, Inc., even have the license plate for you, N C slash C A T dash four six two four. So if you do see them out there, they are working legitimately for the Gas and Electric. And number fifteen, I would like to personally thank Eric Jacobson, Brendan Duzan, and John Boardsam for cleaning up the Stuart Morgan property on Long Point Road and Marion Road, it's down in my neck of the woods, and I really appreciate it. We're out there all the time, all the residents living there picking up when we can, but your help was greatly appreciated. Thank you for your volunteerism. That's it.
All right, the animal cruelty bill is House 4244, and just remember, there's a special place in health for people who abuse animals.
Absolutely.
Ms. Stewart?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Ms. Knob.
Number five was a water quality note that we got, and Charlie, can you just assure us that everything's fine now?
Yeah, I mean, and this is, you know, it happens from time to time, where in our routine testing of the well water, some of the raw well samples will come up with an E. coli hit, probably from an animal, you know, and fortunately, you know, we treat our water before we send it out into the distribution system, and, you know, particularly chlorine, and while there was a, you know, E. coli hit in the raw water, there was no trace in any of the drinking water that got into the distribution system. So that was confirmed today, and so that's the good news. You know, this is just something that happens from time to time, you know, with your water supply.
Thank you. There are a couple of job postings. Number four is van bus driver for the COA, Council on Aging. You can contact Andrea Priest for that. I just lost all my, there we go. We also had number eight, which is a job posting for an electric compliance engineer for the Middleborough G and E. And for that one, you would contact Middleborough G and E Department. Human Resources, Middleborough, just moved again. Human Resources, Middleborough Gas and Electric Department, 32 South Main Street, Middleborough, Mass, or you can email at H R at M G E D dot com. That would be it.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McKinnon?
Relative to that, yes, inspection that's going to be happening, will the, I don't know if you can answer this, but will the person who's doing this inspection have some identification on them beyond just the vehicle description we have and all? Will they have some type of ID card that, and will he be going on to people's property as part of this?
Commissioner Gordon, Gas and Electric, I would say yes. Typically, there's a badge of some sort, if not a uniform, at least a badge.
Can we, can you give them a, make sure that there's proper identification? We don't want to have somebody going on somebody's property.
Okay. That's our goal.
For their own safety.
Mr. Chair, I might add, we do have the name of the gentleman that's going to be doing this, Ray Machado, so that may be helpful as well.
So Ray, would you stand up?
He's right.
Could be me. Here you go.
All right, anybody have anything else? That concludes the meeting.
Want you to adjourn?
I understand a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Thank you very much.